Okay, let's get started once again. For those of you that are just joining us, welcome. If you'd like to submit a speaker's card, if you want to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc if you're at home. Looks like no one's here yet to do that here. So there is translation being provided this evening. Te necesitas traducción. Puedes llamar a nueve sete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y oprimes ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el la tecla del número. Silence your electronic devices. Let's get started. Eliana, roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Deaslocom.
Happy to be here. Again, welcome, everybody. It's great to see you in person. Although we're six feet apart, being cautious and keeping up with our safety rules. I want to thank the staff that's here this evening to help us with this hybrid model. Thank you all for all your assistance. Those of you at home, thank you for joining us. And with that, roll call, please. Oh, no, we did that already, didn't we? See, I was so used to letting Alisa do that. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I'd propose that we move the three measure U's. So that's 10.5, 10.6, 10.7 to consent.
I was also wondering if it could move 10.3 and 10.4. I don't know if people had questions on those. I think they could be moved, right? Wendy or Dr. Baker, yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah, to consent.
Sorry, was 10.4 included in that?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
That was Mike and Cecilia. All those in favor?
Hi.
Ellie, do we have any oral communication this evening?
We have three speakers cards, but they are for our discussion item 8.1.
Wait for those then, till then. Of course it would be. Okay, moving right along to the BOM bond program consent items. Recommendation regarding approval of bond program consent items. Recommendation of approval, measure T bond program tracking list of items. And recommendation of approval of the M U V transfer switch installation proposal for various sites. Do I have a motion to approve all those three? Cecilia in.
Second.
Mike, hold those in favor.
Hi.
Moving on to bond program action items. The first one is 7.1 recommendation regarding adoption of resolution 20. Do we have any questions or comments on that? None? Okay. So moved. And Cecilia. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, 7.2 recommendation of adoption of resolution 21. The approval of Garfield Community School new building. Do we have any questions or comments on that item? Can I have a motion to move it?
So moved.
Janet.
Second.
And Mike, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will. Bye. Okay, on to eight discussion items. The first one is 8.1 COVID-19 update for January 2022.
Again, good evening, everyone, and also community who have just attended the meeting. As you can see, we are in the boardroom in person tonight and will be this way continuing on. So what we wanted to do this evening was just give you an update of where we are since we just came back from winter break. And you all know, you've been reading social media, you've been reading the newspapers, watching television, and hearing about the surge with COVID. And so what we want to do is give you an update of what's happening in the Redwood City School District, and then take any questions, any discussions that you'd like to have. And from that point on, we want to give also some information on some of the vaccine clinic that's going to take place, and also additional testing that is going to happen after the president's week for our students, and also additional COVID testing for not only our students, but also our staff after the spring break. So we want to get that information out. So not only that you have it, but our public has it too. So I am going to begin, and then Wendy's going to take on some of the slides also. So we continue to test to keep our students in school. And if you all remember, we are contracting with Bay PLS. And we started this contract with them early fall. And it's one of the state providers that was approved by the C D E. And so we got in really early, and we are one of the districts that is using them. At our school sites, there are two times per week that children can test, and also our staff can test. You just have to sign up, and children are tested. C D P H has provided an update on the winter break with return to school and the Omicron virus in mind. And so we're going to go through that update. And I'm sure that many of you probably, as board members, probably listened to Superintendent McGee, because I think she was addressing board members and county community members in regard to where we are with Omicron virus and the education throughout San Mateo County. Next slide. So, you know, we get this question, why aren't you closing schools? Why aren't you closing schools? Well, back in March of 2020, we had no knowledge of COVID-19 release. We did not have our safety protocols in place. Yes, the initial surge was deadly. Healthcare symptoms were overwhelmed. We had little access to P P E, and no one was vaccinated at that time. So at that time, our local health officer, you know, in March closed schools down, along with the state of California, from Governor Newsom to close. Next slide. What we've learned since March 2020, schools need to be open during the pandemic. And these are the reasons why. Our students need access to in-person learning. There's a need for that social emotional interaction with peers and caring adults. And we need to have, continue with our meaningful engagement. In the schools, we have safety protocols in place. We have testing in place. We have vaccinated staff and many students who are vaccinated. And there are independent study options for those parents who do not want to send their children to school at this point in time because of the virus. Next slide. And what are we doing to help? Well, we have been in possession of K95 masks for our staff. Staff just need to ask for them. We have now ordered KN95 masks for our students. So we'll have them in place for our students, and hopefully they'll be here within the next week. The County Office of Education has also ordered KN95 masks for our staff. So Eliana gave her the number of staff members we have. And we, I will be asking Martin as soon as I'm given the go-ahead to pick them up. And so we'll pick them up from the county office of Ed. We have open testing. We're sending home test kits for February and spring breaks, and we'll talk about that a little later in another slide that Ms. Kelly will present. We are hosting weekend testing to return to work and school by invitation. And Ms. Kelly will go through that in more depth. What has happened? And you'll see in a slide that is coming. The isolation period has gone from 10 days to five days. So if I test positive on Monday, I have to wait five days after that positive test before I can test again. Many times that falls in the week, on a weekend. And parents don't have anywhere to go to get the children tested. Staff doesn't have anywhere to go. So what we're doing is we are going to be offering the test on Sunday. So, and Wendy will be talking about that in a little bit. Our COVID-19 director is in place. She's handling a lot of tracking and tracing along with Antonio Perez and along with his assistant Kathy and anyone else that we have available to track and trace. We're all working together to manage absenteeism of our employees, whether it be our substitutes, whether it be our staff development people, whether it be outside the classroom teachers who are at the school site, whether it be district office staff who can go into classrooms or even go into the schools and manage. Principal may be out. And there are vaccination and booster clinics, and we'll talk about that in a slide that is coming. Next slide. So the vaccination event, this is for, there are seven within San Mateo, seven locations within San Mateo County. Hoover School happens to be one of them. And Hoover School's events is on January 20th. And you see the hours there from 2:30 to 7:00, and then January 21st from 2:30 to 7:00, and then January 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So that is all in place within our own community. That does not mean that you can't go to the other six. If you go to the link here, it'll tell you where the other six are in San Mateo County. And I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's three other school districts that are participating. So this is in place, and there are going to be boosters. So for our students or your children who are 12 and above can go and get their booster at one of these times and dates. All right. Very thrilled about that because, like I said, there, I think total there are four school districts among the 23 that are doing this. I was really happy that got the information in ahead of time, and we were selected. So really, really a plus for us. Next slide. And then I'm going to turn this portion of the updated C D P H guidelines for students and staff as of January 6th. And then today, we just got a new revision on the San Mateo County Office of Education pandemic recovery framework. It came in at about 5:00. So some things. I think we're up to date, Wendy. I think we're up to date. I think we'll be okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Great seeing everybody in person. And I'm pleased tonight to present to all of you and on behalf of the staff in the Redwood City School District. Dr. Baker had mentioned Dr. Shannon Laney, our COVID-19 director, who has just been really on top of things. But in all honesty, over, since we've returned from winter break, it's really created much more of a village to help support this process. So it's been a little stressful on our students and our staff, I'm sure, with families and so forth coming back. But I'm pleased that we had a strong system in place before winter break and the communication tools and the communication processes so that we could come back to this type of situation and drawing upon other trained staff, including some site support staff, site administrators, et cetera, to help us with proper communication. So the name of the game has been flexibility all along, and this time is no different. We do have some changes, and I just wanted to start tonight by speaking about definitions. So as we go a new forward and you hear about things, the C D P H and now our framework, which I have to say, we have to update perhaps for next time too, if there are any changes, really divides students and staff and their situations into isolation or quarantine. So isolation really affects those and are described as those that have tested positive. Quarantine are for situations in which students have been exposed. So over the next few slides, I want to talk about what the pathways are because it does matter with absenteeism and making sure that students have assignments, classrooms are covered, and other positions in the district are covered accordingly. So for employees, we really follow the Cal OSHA guidelines, which are now streamlined with California Department of Health. And same with students, we follow the California Department of Public Health, which ties into the San Mateo County framework. So the next slide here really describes what has to happen for a student or a staff member, regardless of their vaccination status, when they have tested positive. So you may have actually now, based on the numbers we hear in the news, I've heard of somebody tested positive or no somebody. They do need to stay home for five days, our staff and our students. And day, the day of testing or a symptomatic day is really day zero. So we track accordingly. And as Dr. Baker mentioned, we want people to come back as soon as they actually can come back. And so we want to ask them a series of questions. Dr. Laney does this and wants to know whether or not they have symptoms or if their symptoms are improving. And if so, we can then give them a rapid antigen test. So as Dr. Baker mentioned, if somebody tests positive on Monday, then Saturday would be their day five. And we've set up a series of testing opportunities by invitation only so that employees and students, starting with this coming weekend, can be tested. So will not be open to the general public in terms of our students and staff, but for just invitation only. So assuming that all of that occurs, we do want students back and continue to wear masks and so forth. If a student does not, or staff member does not test negative after day five, then they still need to continue isolation and can come back after day 10. So it could be a longer trajectory for that absence. So as I mentioned earlier, regarding returning to work and school, after the criteria has been met, we are making sure that people are trying to return. And I have to say, last Sunday, we met with staff on those that were identified to come back. We did a little trial with staff, and we were able to get quite a few staff members back, which helps then divert our substitute teachers and helps with allocation of resources. So these identified dates here are the dates that we are testing by invitation only. So I want to switch gears about quarantine. We probably have more people who have communications about quarantine because they've been a close contact. So when somebody tests positive, there's sort of a clear pathway for them. But if somebody is exposed, it depends on their status essentially, and whether or not they were wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. So if you'd like to dig a little bit deeper in this, the C D P H has lots of scenarios to look at. But I just gave this one example about, because we assume at school everyone's wearing a mask at the appropriate times. Outdoors is still eligible. But people do eat sometimes together and so forth, but most of the time they're masked. And so therefore, they can continue a modified quarantine at school, meaning attending school and so forth, unless they are symptomatic, et cetera. So that's once again, an effort to keep kids and staff in school that may technically be exposed. All right. In accordance to our regular school schedule, we have holidays, weekends, et cetera. And you may have heard in the news, other districts that deployed their home kits, their home test kits over winter break, which was a choice for us. But the way our schedule worked out, we did have January 3rd as an available testing date, which we took full advantage of with our Bay P L S team. So we chose to hold our test kits for the February break. So that's what we decided to do, and this chart outlines what our plans will be. So we have here the Martin Luther King Weekend, which is coming up this weekend. We are not deploying tests. However, we have our regular testing schedule in place, starting on Tuesday. And we will be testing on Monday, a holiday, those who's five days and over the weekend. So then we can arrange subs and so forth, or return subs to their classrooms. The February break and the spring break will allow for families to actually test during the week. Our Bay P L S team does not have off, so they will still be working at their regular schedule. And we have them available. There's two teams that will be able to test students, and we are giving out home tests for students to take home and utilize over the break, preferably one at the end of the break. We'll have a direction sheet. And then, once again, we will still have that testing opportunity for identified positive cases at the end of the president's break. And the same thing will occur for spring break. We will actually deploy one based on the inventory we have now, per student, per staff member to administer on Sunday. And then, once again, we have our Bay P L S team that's working the entire week. So it's another testing option.
Wendy, there's, and the other piece is that I know the county office of Ed has our numbers, and they're trying to see if we can get additional tests. So if we get additional tests prior to spring break, it may be two as opposed to one. And then the parents have the directions to upload their results up to C D P H, if I'm not mistaken. So that's, that's really good, too. And so they wouldn't have to wait in the long lines because I heard for that Monday on that, the second, I guess it was. Yeah, because, no, the Monday, the third, that there were long lines. And, and, and what, at one point, at one point, you know, they stopped. And so some people didn't get tested, and I heard about this. And so we need to, we need to come up with a better system. And so this will help us. This will help us if everyone has access to an at-home test, read the directions, and then upload the information that is given to you using the QR card. So that'll be a big plus. The, the other plus that we have with us is also that we have Bay P L S, which is going to be here during that week when we're, when, when their school is not in existence, but they're still keeping their regular schedule. So if parents want to bring their child, they're, they can do that. And then the other piece is the Sunday, which is something that, you know, really is going to help families, especially during this time when, I guess, kids are still not readily available. They can come and get tested so their child can get back to school on Monday if that, you know, that, I call it day six, you know, is over weekend.
So I am really thankful that we have the Bay P L S team, especially, as you may have heard, it was very difficult over the last two weeks or what have you to find rapid antigen testing labs out in the community in which you could have an appointment or walk up, because I think they were overtaxed. So I'm pleased that we have an ongoing order form that comes in that accommodates our staff and our students, and has been for the last month since October. So we will definitely be utilizing them in a great way over these next few weeks and breaks, of course, and ongoing through June. All right, I will stop sharing at this point. We'll continue.
Does anyone have any clarifying questions, Janet?
So first, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Baker for getting in the queue so early with the Bay P L S and making sure that our district had access to that, because I know a lot of districts don't. My only question was on the at-home tests that are going home. Are teachers handing those out to the students to bring home, or are parents going to have to pick them up?
So that's a discussion that we have to have, and that's because there are some difference of opinions when you talk to the people at the county office and county health. So if that's the case, what we will do, if the case is that we need to make sure an adult comes and picks up the test, I'm going to ask for volunteers, parent volunteers at each school site that can give them out so it will not tax the office staff, it will not tax the principal, vice principal. And there have been some emails from parents that they've already sent me saying they're willing to volunteer in any manner if they, if we need it. For example, for that Sunday, which was the second, and I was giving out these in-home tests. We gave out 1,530, myself and Dr. Laney gave, was with me, and so was Jim Nichols, one of Wendy's assistants. And it was really interesting because some of the other neighboring school districts, well, of course, the private schools and the charter schools and the high school district was not doing this. And so they were trying to get the tests from us, and I said, no, it's the Redwood City Elementary School District. And how they got the notice, especially the private schools and, and the charter schools, I don't know, because the notice went out only to our parents. And I can understand our parents having a child in the high school and also in the elementary school. And I said, well, you, there's two, there's two tests in here. So if you have two children, they can each take one in the high school and be in the elementary. But I was very grateful that we had them because people were telling me as they, we're walking up, we can't find these anywhere. Even our staff, we had a lot of our staff members come on that Sunday to pick them up. So there are additionals have been ordered by the county, and we're just wait till they tell us, come pick them up. As Martin went and picked up all those that we have right now, they're in Wendy's office in the conference room. It was a pallet. And Nancy McGee, Superintendent McGee said, when can you come get your pallet? Because I didn't need it for the December, but I need it for future. And I said, when can I do it? And I'm just really glad that all staff have pitched in and really helped, you know, to make this really work, including, you know, our classified staff, our teaching staff, our principals. They've all just, you know, got on board and said, what do we need to do to make that work and not to close schools? So.
Lisa?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I mean, really amazing work to all of our staff. It's, it's just mind-blowing. I did want to just mention, today we did have that county call with County Superintendent Nancy McGee. I think Mike and I were on the call. I don't know if anyone else had the opportunity to be there. So just as a quick update, and then actually, so, so we got a lot of information from our county and heard from some of the school board members in our county. And then I also just wanted to say, as the CSBA Region Five Director, I've been in contact with people up and down the state. And although it's not perfect in our district, it's not perfect anywhere right now in the United States and in the world. I will say, I'm very proud of the work that our district has done, particularly if you talk to some other school districts. There's other school districts that they don't even have the capacity to do any testing right now. So, you know, people are having to do it, staff and students are having to do it outside of their own school district. We have some school districts right now who are not doing tracing and tracking because they just don't have the staff capacity to do it. We have a neighboring school district that has a resolution tomorrow on their agenda. I don't know if any of you saw that Sequoia Union High School District has a very strong resolution that will be going out to the governor and the state legislature, basically saying, you are asking school districts right now to be public health agencies. We are not public health agencies. We have a job to do to educate kids. And now we're having to, even we just heard, we're basically having to do all this public health stuff. So I, I think that there's, in the next couple of weeks, there's going to be a lot more advocacy to the state that we need additional support. So hopefully that'll help us, additional tests, maybe some additional money to help pay for this extra staffing that we have. But I just want to say, you know, to our school district, I'm very, very proud and appreciative of all your work. I think we've been able to stay in person because of all the work you've done to make sure that classes have staff and all of that. We have some neighboring districts that are struggling, having staff in the classroom. So anyway, I just want to say thank you. And I don't know, Mike, if you had anything to add, but it was a really interesting call today, kind of eye-opening.
Yeah, you covered it well. The, there were other districts too that are also just unable to do, they just had to suspend contact tracing as well. It sounded like there's going to be additional guidelines coming soon on what contact tracing is supposed to be. But I think that what we're doing here is really at the forefront of what other districts are doing. And so it was really good to hear that. And Superintendent McGee- And so it was really good to hear that. And Superintendent McGee also covered much of the same things that you covered tonight, Dr. Baker, around, you know, why schools are open. And I just want to reiterate that, that I really think that that is ju- just critical. We'd said it last year, we'd heard it last year, it was schools should be the last place to close and the first place to open. And I see that ethic throughout San Mateo County, but particularly here in Redwood City. So I'm glad for that.
I'll say that again. I really want to just put, just stress that it has not been easy these last 10 days. And I know that there is hope on the other side of the next few weeks. But between the middle school teachers covering on their prep time from TOSSAs, from people just assisting in so many regards, the principals and assistant principals, my goodness. They all get a halo. They just have really pitched in in so many ways and a lot, a lot of hardworking staff. One thing I love about being a 20-year-old veteran, a 20-year veteran, I should say, in our district is this idea of a village and really helping out each other, and especially time of need, but also to work together to, to make things happen. And it is so evident to see over these last 10 days. So thanks to everyone on that. Sorry to interrupt you, Mike.
Ellie, I think we have some speakers.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, for the vaccine events that we have coming up, are we offering boosters?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Okay, our first speaker is Pam Barash.
There she is.
I'm not that hard to find, but I'm glad you found me. Happy New Year. Can you all hear me?
Of course.
If you can hear me, give me a wave in the board picture, because I can't. There you are. Happy New Year. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. I would really like to talk to you tonight, first of all, about how happy I am to see all of those slides and how much we are doing. But specifically, I'd like to talk about the masks. So at the end of winter break, I went on to the PPE Googled form that, for those of you who are not familiar, staff has had access to since the beginning of the pandemic to request supplies. And I went to request N95 masks because of Omicron and what's going on in the world. And my surprise at the end of winter break was that it was only for those who were unvaccinated. So I emailed Dr. Leahy and said, hey, in light of this, could that be changed? And she said, yes, I'll get back to you at the beginning of the last week. And last week I was told, yes, the form was changed and we could get N95 masks. So I requested N95 masks and the next day I had a bag of painter's masks in my room, not N95 masks. Okay, so I went out and I bought with my own personal money, my own set of N95 masks, a bag, a box of 30 of them for my husband and I to share. And this week I went ahead and ordered on the Google Doc, more N95 masks for this week. And today, yesterday, excuse me, I have my days messed up. I had a single N95 mask in a Ziploc bag on my desk, and I was told that that was for the week. Now, I went home and looked at the box of N95 masks that I bought myself, that were the same mask that was on my desk, that very clearly say in bold print, "Single use only, please dispose of after use." There are many school districts in the Bay Area and in California that are giving their teachers a KN95 mask for every day of the week through the end of the school year. So my request would be that, especially in kindergarten where we talk all day long, then we breathe, and we have our germs from our own mouths coming out, that we could make every effort to give the staff five KN95 masks a week through, at least through the end of this surge, if not for the rest of the year, so that we could feel as safe as possible, and it does not have to come out of teachers' budgets and pockets to pay for them. Thank you for letting me speak.
Oh, that is going to take place with the, with the supplies that we're getting from the county. So hopefully the supplies will be here soon, and we can start with what we have right now and go in that direction.
So John, is it that we, I think there's the N95 and then there's the KN95?
The N95 is really hard to find at this point in time because it's on back order. And they're going first to the medical community. But the KN, like what we're wearing, what we have on, those we can order.
And, and the KN95 are supposed to be adequate, right, for Omicron?
Right.
So, so is it just that, so Pam, I just want to say I'm really sorry to hear that, that you haven't gotten the mask that you need. Thank you for sharing that with us. But is it just that we didn't have, we just didn't have the supply? And could you speak to why we didn't have the supply?
Well, supplies, when we first did this,
Yeah.
we, we got the surgical mask, you know, for, for everyone. And then, you know, supplies have been coming plentiful more and more each day, with the exception of the N95, which is for the medical community. So there could have been a breakdown in our communication at that point in time with, with maintenance. And so, but we can make sure that they get five. And then it's up to them to, if they lose one, then, you know, we'll, we'll definitely look at each circumstance individually.
Great, because I do agree that we need to make sure our staff has the, you know, the mask that worked for Omicron. Yeah, for sure. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Ayla Spinelli Stansel.
Hi, I am calling to find out about the way to clear volunteers through the school district a little faster, so that we can have tutors help children in need faster, too. That's it.
So can I ask you a question? Which volunteer group are you with?
I am, I, I, this is me talking because I volunteer for Healthy Cities.
Okay, we are working closely with Healthy Cities.
Right. And, and I've been like struggling, I've got tutors ready to work, but, and children ready to be with those tutors, but we can't get them cleared fast enough to, to be able to, to hop on the bandwagon.
Okay. And then the other thing that was just, just came out from the county is that all our volunteers need to be boosted. So that's another thing that we're going to be asking the volunteers that just came out also.
Right.
So, and I'm sure most of you are, because when I was here on that Sunday giving out home tests, several came to get a home test and they were boosted.
Right.
So Wendy, do you want to take that?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I, I do know that Jennifer Nichols has been in contact with JR Bay at Healthy Cities over the last week in order to receive the booster test, the booster documentation. So if you don't mind circling back with JR, that would be helpful. And then I will also circle back in my department.
Okay. Another question is if, if there's an, I mean, I'm willing to volunteer and help with Jennifer. If she needs extra help to look through this, I am more than happy to help out there also. So just reach out and I'm available.
Will you, we will definitely take you up on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Perfect.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Lamas. Lamas, double L-A-M-A-S. Okay, our next speaker is Rebecca Foutch, F-O-U-T-C-H.
So what, what does that mean? She can't speak? Oh, it's not compatible, the Zoom. So can you bump her to a panelist so she can speak that way?
Yeah.
Okay, do that, please. All right, there you are, Becky. Unmute yourself.
Hi, I am a panelist. Hi, sorry, I don't know what I'm on that isn't working. Thanks, everyone. I'm just going to read what I wrote on my card. Thank you. I'm flabbergasted by the amount of extra work that is being asked of our school staff. So thanks to everyone. I had a specific question about, like, COVID kids returning. So what if a student's day five falls on a Monday? Will the district reach out to the family to test the student before the following Sunday? Or will the district accept a negative home test kit result after five days for a positive student to return to school? Or is the school required to administer testing for students to come back after being positive with COVID?
Very good question. And the guidelines will maybe changing, but let's tell her what we have right now.
So should a child be a close contact or be positive and need to test after day five and that day lands on a Monday? And assuming that's a weekday, then we do have our Bay PLS team, we call it the mobile group, that is sent to a site where we've had a larger group, or we have our schedule regularly in place, number one. But the communication that will happen will be through the letter that is sent home. And then that states that testing does need to occur after the day five. So, and that can be done in various forms, not just through our own district, but that, that is a possibility. And, and then we have to make a determination whether it's negative and then, or if it's not negative, what the next pathway is as well.
Okay, so if I were to test my child at home with a home kit and show you that result, would that be acceptable?
So before 5:00 PM today, and I have not been able, I haven't had a moment to look at the new framework, there might be a change.
I don't think so, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet.
It's in the works. It's in the works because many families are in the same predicament. And so that's why we're having this Sunday testing. So I did not see it in the new pandemic framework when I was going through it before this meeting. So, but it's in the works where you would utilize a home test, especially one that you can upload the results to CDPH. And then we could look at them in that manner, too. But right now, no, it has to come through either ourselves, or you go through another testing service that's in.
Right, because it has to be supervised by somebody other than yourself, by somebody who's been trained, is what it says right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks all so much.
That's the end of speakers cards.
Okay, so do we have any additional comments or questions for John on the topic?
No questions, but again, the same as Mike and everybody has said, I do, and I am very grateful for everything you guys have done. You know, again, on top of everything, and as a parent myself, too, I appreciate it. So it is very, it gives me a peace of mind to know that we are taking care of our students. So again, I really appreciate what everybody does. Thank you.
And I do have a question. The mask for the students, is Nancy getting those?
Actually, we are the ones that are purchasing those right now. We, as superintendents, asked her, and so she's looking into that. We asked for the, for our staffs, and she came through with that. And so now we've asked her for the student ones, but we have ordered student ones.
As I was listening to Wendy's explanation, you know, that's one of the issues about definitions that's very confusing to people. So I know that Jorge is very good at making those nice little graphics. So maybe he can make a little roadmap where the student goes, and that might help with some of the confusion until it changes again.
Yeah, he and, and Shanna right now are working on the communication, the notification that goes home, because that did change on how, what the wording should be. So he and Shanna are working on it tonight. So that's what he said, he was going home to do that, but he was going to listen to the board meeting at the same time, in case something came up.
And I just as well want to say thank you to all of you for all your hard work. I know that it's the little engine that could, you know, it's like every time you're almost at the top and those things changes and here we go, but then it goes right on back. So I know it's been tough on everybody, but I do appreciate it. I know that Dr. Baker has reached out to all his contacts and has really put our district out there in front of all the others so that our students and our staff could be safer and get the equipment and testing and shots that they need.
Right. And I want to thank, you know, the parents in the community, because they send us emails and it gives us ideas of what we need to go ask for. And it turned around, and then in the turnaround, we get it. So, so it's been very helpful.
Just one more thing that we heard on the county call today, and they put it in the chat, and I would imagine maybe you guys got it by the end of the day. The county has produced, I think, some pretty useful information on appropriate masks for the time right now. You know, how to double map, yeah. And so it's in Spanish and English, so hopefully we can get that out to everybody.
On Friday blurbs.
Oh, oh, you already had it in there. Oh, okay. Or it'll go out
Yeah.
this Friday. Perfect.
This Friday.
Okay, thanks. I thought that was, because I know there is a lot of questions on masking as well.
On Friday. And then, you know, we try to put a communicate, it's not really the superintendent's newsletter, just to communicate about what's happening and what parents need to be aware of. The next piece, as you know, we had a parent that emailed us in regard to vaccination confirmation. And so that did stop for a bit, but now we're going back to it. And so Jorge and Michelle are getting that information, so it can start getting out to parents and getting back to us, so we can start updating our records. Oh, what, Jorge just texted me, it went out already. Something went out. I don't know, something went out. Oh, the mask guidelines, they went out. They went out already. Okay.
Thank you, Jorge.
Yeah, and it's going to be this way for the next few weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that was the one other thing that Nancy did talk about, is that we're looking at a ski slope. So hopefully the next few weeks will be really fast and furious with lots of positive cases, but it should die out. I mean, that's what the experts are hoping, saying, we'll see.
You know, I looked at the county dashboard today, and there was a huge spike, and then the last five days, it's been much lower.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that we're not seeing another spike after that, because it dropped a lot on daily cases.
I haven't seen it. I didn't look at it.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, just a thought, since we're talking about COVID and communications, do we have an idea if most of our parents, if not all of our parents, are actually getting our emails? I know that we get texts, right? So, but those that don't have a text, do they get an email? Do we get a confirmation? I know Jorge and Michelle are really good, whoever updates Facebook, and so there's that communication. But we, do we know if, obviously, maybe not everybody has Facebook, but do we know if we're actually communicating? We are communicating, but if the parents are actually receiving that information, do we have some sort of, I don't know, I don't want to say a survey, but I, I would just like to know.
Knowing, you know, there's a comeback that we can, you know.
Because I think it's very important for everybody to be informed. I know at one point, maybe people think we get too many texts, too many emails. Right now, I think it would be best to have more than less. So again, it's just a thought, and I do appreciate everything the communications department, you know, everything they do. But again, it's just a thought.
So let me check with him and get back to you on that.
Well, I'll add too, that there are parents who have decided they get too much information and they opt out of it.
Yeah.
So then they're not getting anything.
Yeah.
You know. If they're gonna choose to opt out of really important information.
Right.
But I will check. I will check and get back to you on that one.
Anything else on this item? No. Again, thank you, everybody. And John, especially to you. I am always very happy to see that you are out there in the frontline, side by side with the workers. Worker be myself, I know that that really means a lot to people. So thank you for doing that. Sorry, I keep covering it up. Eight point two, just first reading and discussion of board policy 1240 volunteer assistance.
Thank you. So I want to thank once again the Board Policy Committee, Janet Lawson and Lisa McAvoy for meeting regularly to discuss these policies. These do come from CSBA. And I want to thank the board. Great questions came in this week. I appreciate your thoroughness and reading in advance. It helps move the meetings along and we can answer any questions that came up. The questions were this week were regarding volunteerism were minor and such, but these, this updated policy is very timely, especially with the last speaker. We do need to collect the vaccination cards. So Jennifer Nichols in HR is tasked in doing that. And there's a shared spreadsheet with the office managers. And if a volunteer's name is on the list, they're clear. Her name is not on the list, then they're not able to volunteer. So that's the system that's been in place. And so this policy really reflects vaccinations, but then other updates for volunteerism. Any questions?
I have one following the previous item, which was, did I hear right that it's now boosted, is fully vaccinated according to the regulation here?
Yes. So we started off with this great, so that we just, we told the site administrators and the office staff, you might see people disappearing from the list. And then being put back on. So it's quite the task to manage. The previous speaker from Healthy Cities, they actually asked us for extra support in helping their organization manage the volunteer paperwork, which is unique and unusual. But we really wanted to make sure that we assist, you know, partners to get in. So we do have an extra layer now that we have to manage. And maybe even booster number four, shot four, I don't know. We just put another line on the form just in case.
Is that just having received the booster or is there a certain time after that?
Just within the appropriate guidelines of yes.
Well, because I think I've heard Dr. Fauci saying that it takes about a month for you to get fully boosted back up after you get your booster shot. So.
So what we have read is usually 14 days is a good guideline, but actually I'm reading seven to 14. The reason why we were looking to this more critically is we have, well, we had planned field trips coming up that we were preparing for. So we'll see where that goes. But right now, we're using the guideline of two weeks.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving on to eight point three, first reading and discussion of board policy 3555 nutrition program compliance and accountability. No, that's a different one.
Yes, thank you. So this policy tied nicely into our uniform complaint policy language. But it is now identifying different organizations in which people could report various complaints to regarding this program in particular. Although the UCP, the Uniform Complaint Process, you know, there's a variety of programs in general. So there are any questions on this updated policy?
Looks like you guys have done outstanding job. Okay, eight point four, first reading and discussion of board policy 0460 local control and accountability plan.
This one tends to come fairly often, I would say. So we always make sure this wolf is reading them carefully and others. Yes, there were some minor changes in this one. So are there any questions regarding this policy?
I just want to say thank you, Liz, for always keeping up with it.
She has another one.
Yes, so every year upon enrollment and seventh grade specifically, we have required immunizations. And so this policy was updated to reflect new laws, but also to discuss when students can be admitted or not admitted. How do you ensure that our special ed students are still receiving outside services if their condition or disability or health concerns are affected by immunizations and so forth. So this policy was updated accordingly.
Any questions or comments? No? Great job, you guys. Thank you.
And we meet tomorrow, so for our next round. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to move the consent items which include action items 10.3, 10.4, 5, 6, and 7?
Was 10-2 included in that?
No.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa and Mike, all those in favor? Aye. Now on to 10.1, recommendation regarding revisiting the school boards, March 11, 2020, vote on inter-district transfers.
Yes. And so I know you've all read the memo and Mike, I have your information. I'm going to give it here. I'm sorry, I didn't get to it until late this afternoon. So what I have before you is the recommendation to go in a manner to allow the nine siblings over a period of time to enter into the Mandarin immersion program. And I, let me go through my thoughts about this with you. So back in 2020, we stopped accepting inter-district transfers when our Mandarin immersion program was in its fifth year. In 2020, both the Spanish immersion and the accelerated learning had been open for more than 20 years. And both programs have benefited from having students with inter-district transfers. And by the accelerated learning program, I'm talking about North Star. While the Mandarin immersion is a thought after program with many applications, when you think about allowing them the same opportunity as Adelante Selby and North Star. And we would be doing so by approving these nine inter-district transfers up until 2026. If you saw the graphic that was in the memo, which means more than 10 years of inter-district transfers. So during this time, when we're talking about additional supports, during our interviews with other Bay Area Mandarin immersion programs, as we did our research, it was made very clear to us by those programs that a new program would need additional support. We just couldn't get it off the ground and start running with it. At that time, Dr. Linda Montes was with us and she and I went out with several parents of Mandarin immersion program and looked at Mandarin immersion programs throughout the Bay Area, even some private ones. One especially that was in San Francisco. We had a consultant working with us at the same time who had started the Mandarin immersion programs in the Cupertino School District, and she worked with us for several years. So we have been doing a lot since the program started. And as, you know, this school year, we continue to help the Mandarin immersion program. And this will answer trustee Wells' question that he had to me, what is the? There, when you, when you saw the memo, I didn't have a financial cost. So there's always a financial cost when you start a program. It's inevitable. It's going to happen because it's getting off the ground, needs more support. There's a lot of training that goes on and we do that for any program that started in the Redwood City School District. So I'm going to give you, within the last couple of years, the support that we provide to the Mandarin immersion program. So the Mandarin, Mandarin immersion program has an instructional coach, which we pay 50% of the salary for that coach. And the slight piece, the other, and I believe it's, could be the parent group that pays out. I would have to look into that more clearly for you. As to where's that other 50% is coming from. The Mandarin immersion language intervention instructor, this is a classified person that helps with the language proportion of Mandarin immersion to help if students are having difficulties in reading and so forth. The classified position is at 50%. We do have a Mandarin immersion curriculum consultant that we use and we used her not specifically for K-5 program, but also for the 6-8 program because we have some sixth graders at Kennedy. And then last school year, we did have a Mandarin immersion teacher for fifth grade mathematics and that person worked 50% of the time. So when you're looking at a, at a cost and the program for it to get off the ground and so forth, and these, in this area, for the 2021 school year, it was $84,420. And for this school year, it's $119,420 additional for their support. And this will help to continue and give the needed resources to create this unique program and give it support. This is in addition to what all 12 schools received across the board with the help of federal funding. For those of you that were not on the board, when we had magnet schools, which was a federal program, and all our schools were schools of choice, there was $3 million that came into the district every year for three years. And then we got another grant for another 3 million that came into the district every year for three years. So a total of six shares, $3 million each. And the other schools, and there were more than 12 of them, there were 16 at the time, received dollars of support for whatever, we call them schools of choice program. At that time, it was Mandarin program, the theme they had. For example, at Orion, it was parent participation. And at John Gill, at the time, it was the arts. The arts, if I'm not mistaken, it was arts. And Wendy, you were there as a principal.
I think it was performing arts.
Performing arts and something. And also Garfield had a performing arts piece. And then there was like this. I'm trying to think now, Kennedy was something with science and some other technology. I think that when technology was just coming aboard. And what I'm trying to say is that they all had support, but they had support in a greater amount of money because we had a federal grant. And the grant required certain things needed to take place. So in moving forward, as you would, as you saw on my recommendation, the recommendations is to move forward with these nine. It's only with these nine over that, this period of time. And then it stops and it will stop, just like we have with our other programs that do exist right now. We are not taking inter-district transfers as we, as you approved on in 2020. So now's the time for discussion.
President Diaz-Lukem, we have a speaker's card. The speaker's card is from Jen Parsons and she's not able to address the school board directly. So she wants someone to read her comment. I'm not able to speak tonight, but I do want someone to read my comment. I'm an Orion parent, participation parent. And I feel strongly that because families were encouraged to join the MI program over the past years, their whole family should be grandfathered in to participate in the program. First, there's room for them and not actually as expensive as it looks at first glance. And second, even if it was expensive, I truly think it's just the right thing to do to build trust with the school district and the school community. And it would be a good model for our children to see us all keep our word and support each other.
So does anyone have any comments or questions?
Okay. Yeah, I think that narrowly scoped, you know, this isn't a bad recommendation. The program is young, you know, and it does need extra support. And so I think it's okay to make special provisions for it to, in that mind. And so I'm, you know, I'm supportive in that sense. It does feel a little bit of a Band-Aid from, you know, where, what's, what may be, may or may not be needed. I just don't know, you know, and I agree, you already covered it. It was created under totally different circumstances and assumptions and a set of circumstances that have seen major shifts since the program started, including the shift to community funding, which prompted the trend, the change to not allow inter-district transfers. And as you already mentioned, new programs start with, they need a bigger pool of students to be able to draw from, to be able to, to bring, to show that the program's successful, which then breeds more success and can start giving the comfort for people in the district to say, this is a program that's gonna be successful. Speaking of pools of students, you know, our student population has dropped 25% since the program started. You know, I looked it up in the interim budget. It went from 8,800 the year, it was just before it started, 8,400 the year it started, down to 6,400. And that's just the enrollment numbers. So that's 24%. It's gone through school consolidation and of course, the pandemic, all in its formative years. And of course, you know, all our programs have gone through that. We've all lived through these changes that have happened there. But, you know, it's gonna be a little bit more acute for a program just starting out. And so I do think though, at some point, not tonight, you know, this, but at some point, you know, we may need to talk more holistically about the program, given all the changes that have happened from the day it started to where we are today. It is really just a different situation that we're in. You know, what is, what's the goal of the program? How does it fit into the district's goals? What further investment is needed and for how long to make it successful? And how much are we, you know, able to spend to be able to, you know, make it successful? So I'm not, again, I'm not looking to talk about them tonight or expecting to get those answers. This is really, you know, scoped to just these students. And it's scoped for a period of time. But I just wanted to bring it up because when I think about this decision and when I look about the recommendation that's here, and when I look at the students that we're talking about in this program, this is the context that I'm bringing and I just wanted to share that with everyone about how I'm thinking about it.
Celia? Um, so again, this, it's a hard decision. I, when we first talked about it, I really said no to the nine people, thinking about whether that was going to be a cost to the district. Overthinking it. And then I did meet with some of the parents. Although we had said no to the, to the siblings and to the inter-district transfers, I should say. In order to save the program, which I am totally in support of the program, I would then say yes. My only concern, I want to say, I guess is the word I want to use is with the attrition, which we've been seeing, you know, a lot of people are leaving, whether it's the cost of living, whether it was because some of the parents went somewhere else. Um, my biggest concern with the district, and I'm talking about district wide for the best of our students, is if we are going to continue with the middle school classes being so low, I understand right now, this is their seventh year. Then that is where I have a problem, where we don't have the same. I don't want to say it's not fair. But I just feel it's, it is a little bit inequitable. And again, I, when I talk to the parents, when I met with them, when I refer to inequitable, I'm not just referring to the English learners. I'm talking about all students, students district wide. If we see that this is going to continue, this is going to be a trend, right, where kids are living, leaving and their classes are six and seven students. I feel we're really catering to not just the inter-district, is obviously our own Redwood City kids. And then that's where, you know, that's where I have a problem. So maybe if we could talk us aboard where at one point, if there is definitely less than 15 kids. So maybe if we could talk us aboard where at one point, if there is definitely less than fifteen kids, that's we're being, we're, we are being very inclusive to those kids. So if we could just have a conversation, because that would be.
Great. And and so let me, let me bring up something. And I think we, you know, when I, when I met with you, we talked a bit about this and Liz is aware of this very clearly. When other love there, it was an other lot, there was Spanish immersion at the time. Was it at the lot, was it? Okay, thank you. She started, so she should know. So it was started as a K eight, correct?
Each year.
Each year, but we we determined it was going to be a K eight. And so because of what you just said, because of the attrition and people moving and going to another program in this, another school within the school district, we were unable to continue with six, seven and eight. And so we had to make a decision with parents and parents were not happy with us that it was not going to be a K eight at the site. If you wanted to remain with the program, you were going to have to take that six, seven and eight. And we're going to bring it to where it where it is right now, Kennedy. We did the same thing with Orion. Orion was to be a K eight again with attrition. It couldn't maintain it. So they had the opportunity to choose a school, whether it be Kennedy, whether it be McKinley, whether it be another K eight, whatever. Some are what some, you know, went up to Clifford. So that is something that Mike pointed out, you pointed out, it's something that will need to be looked at, definitely. Because we have made those decisions in the past. And and it's, I understand what you're saying. And we are also looking at a policy tomorrow regarding schools of choice with the policy committee. And I'll be there for that to give my little view on that. Because if you're, if you are in one of our programs, a specialized program, you're in it for a reason and you should stay with it. It's when you start leaving it and going to other programs that it diminishes what the original thought was and how we were going to progress with it. So I really think you are correct. We, at some point in time, we're going to have to probably look at it if it goes in that direction. Because we did that, I said, as I said, with Adelante and we did that with Orion. I'm trying to think who else we did it with. No, John Gill stayed a K, it was state instead of K five Hoover state a K eight. Ah, Taft, Taft was going to be a K, no, there was no way it was going to work. So um I agree with you, it will have to be looked at again, if if there is that movement and that attrition in some different manner.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, so um, well, first of all, thank you very much for all your thinking on all of this. And I know that you worked with a number of staff to put together the memo and gather all the information. And thank you for adding some of the information that I had asked for as well. Um, I I did want to say that, you know, I'm comfortable with your recommendation for the Mandarin immersion only. And I just wanted to share a little bit of my thoughts on this that I do think uh we're only being asked right now by the Mandarin immersion program. No other schools are coming forward asking this. And as the word gotten out, you know, I kind of asked around and it doesn't seem like from the other schools, there's the kind of interest as there is from the Mandarin immersion program for the very reasons that you outline in the memo, right? It's a, it's a younger program. It still needs to grow and support and all that. I also think that um prior to us becoming basic aid and needing to make the decision about out of district students, the Mandarin immersion program was probably doing the most to recruit out of district students. And as Jen Parsons said, they were being told that, you know, hey, come to our district. We want you, you can bring your whole family, we want to stay. We know that through the memos we got from some of the parents and at the school site that many of the families after, you know, have moved into our district. And um really, these are the the couple of families that for whatever reason are not able to move into our district at this point. And so, you know, there is that sort of extra level of what we had said and all of that recognizing, of course, we've changed to basic aid. So I I feel very strong strongly, we should not be accepting any new out of district students. And I know that's not the recommendation. I just want to be clear on that because we were asked by some of the parents at the Mandarin immersion program to allow for new out of district students. And I think, you know, you're not recommending that and that's not something that I would vote for, given our basic aid status. I also just wanted to say that, you know, I agree with Mike and I know um, you know, I do think in a few years we'll need to analyze the Mandarin immersion program, given, you know, our declining enrollment overall in the school district. If you look at um programs, uh, and some of these you have in the memo, you know, many other school districts that are offering Mandarin immersion have uh higher levels, you know, double or triple the the overall enrollment that we have as well as um higher percentages of Asians in their school district. And not to say, we we know that our program is attracting all ethnicities and races, which we're proud of and we want to have happen. So that's, that's not necessarily an issue, but when you look at the numbers, it just is what it is. I do want to say I'm very happy if you look at the new numbers, looking forward and you've got, you know, good graph there. You know, if we can have forty plus students at a grade level, you start to get to a school that's, you know, for the TK through five, that is more like three hundred and sixty, four hundred students, which does allow for that professional development with the teachers and the staff at the school side. It allows, you know, students to have those relationships. I mean, all the kind of stuff that we know is important. I think some of what the parents told us that if the program's too small, if you're, and we saw this with Orion, actually Orion was a perfect example. If you're only running one kindergarten class, you do get attrition and it becomes very problematic to keep the program going. And I think Cecilia, you make a good point about, you know, right now we see a low number in sixth grade, but that has a lot to do with growing the program and sort of all the changes that we saw and the uncertainties. So I would hope that, you know, particularly if you make some changes to our schools of choice. If we continue, I mean, I think the program is doing very well. It's it's sought after now, you know, by folks in our, by parents and students in our school district. And so, you know, I would assume we'll be able to continue to support it. But I do think it's worth kind of, you know, reflecting on it in a few, you know, a few years to look at, um, how is it going? You know, can we run it at the size it's at um for all the reasons that both the parents have brought up as well as, you know, you have Dr. Baker and your staff. Um, and then I also wanted to say, you know, one of the things that we've talked about that I actually am glad that we moved the Adelante and now Adelante Selby, the sixth to eighth graders, they go to Kennedy. You know, we had a vision years ago, the vision was we would, you know, a few years ago that we would make, you know, Kennedy is our language immersion middle school and we can offer Spanish and Mandarin. And I do think there's opportunities that, you know, maybe some sixth graders who did not go to the Mandarin immersion program, we could actually have an intro Mandarin, Mandarin in class, right? So if if the staffing is such where it kind of goes to what you were saying, Cecilia, is we want to make sure that there's a, there's a equity, there's a fairness in terms of teacher, uh, student ratio. There could be opportunities for other students to take advantage of the Mandarin professionals that we have. So so that's all, you know, I I do think that um there's ways to sort of continue to support the program, but also support other students as well. So that's a long way to say it, but just kind of thinking for today, but thinking for the future. Um, and I did want to say, you know, thank you very much to Principal Catherine Rivera, as well as the parents and the staff at that school site who have really, I think, helped kind of share where they're at and really, um, you know, give us information and all of that, which I think is helpful. So anyway, uh, shorter answer is Dr. Baker, I'm supportive of your of your recommendation.
I'm gonna not repeat everything that's already been said. But I, first of all, thank you very much for your memo. There's a lot of information that went into that. I know a lot of hours getting, gathering that info. Um, I really appreciate the background and the history. Um, it, my short answer is I'm supportive of your recommendation, particularly because of how young the program is. But then with the onset of the pandemic, it really impacted the program. And you can see that in the enrollment numbers where the, you know, they went from a kindergarten class of thirty seven in what they thought was going to be a normal school year in twenty nineteen. Um, and then when we were going to be virtual only, they had a kindergarten class that dropped down to twenty six. And then this current school year is only students that live within the Redwood City School District and they have forty one kindergartners. So you know, you can see their support for the the program and it's growing. But the the pandemic definitely impacted um their ability to recruit families. I'm guessing particularly because we're going to be virtual only. It's probably a lot harder and I know it was a lot harder for the students to learn Mandarin um when they were virtual only. Um, it, you know, going forward, I know that we need to support this program more and and that was clear to me from the presentations from the parents. Um, and so, you know, we don't have to talk about this tonight, but obviously there's some more support that we need to put into this program to make sure that they um are thriving. And particularly this issue with attrition in third grade that we see um across the district. And I know that that's something that we're going to be addressing soon. Um, I think that's all I have to add.
Well, I think uh we are all in agreement. I do want to say thank you for all those hours you guys spent collecting the data, analyzing, writing the memo. And, you know, sometimes when issues like this come up, parents think, oh, well, it's just that school. And I want people to know um that periodically, especially every year, as Liz will tell you, with all the LCAP work, we look at every program and we look at the programs, whether they're thriving, whether they have additional needs. And um as my colleagues have said this evening, um, this has not been normal times. So this program needs a little bit more time to get back out there for the parents to have the um chance again to meet other parents, because that's how they were really out there promoting. And uh for parents who are interested to come in and visit and uh be maybe not the way it was, but somewhat normal. So I think eventually we will need to look at it. I am in agreement with Cecilia's comment as well about the middle school. I remember when my sister was here and she was crying and saying, oh, please don't close Orion. And I can tell you that was a hard decision, but I had to do what was best for all the students. So to me, it's the same as well. So and I do want to thank the parents. I know that they've been through a lot and they really care about the program and Catherine for all the support and extra work that they've put there and the teachers. Because I know they they try really hard as well. So I think, let's see, that is an action item, actually.
President T S Locom, we have one more speaker's card. Lily Milton? Milton, M I L T O N?
Oh, can you hear me? You guys are off.
Yep.
You guys, okay, hi, everyone. Um, my name is Lily Milton. I think um, yeah, I've all, I'm seeing you all before on previous meetings. I just, I want to just chime in. I don't need actually um, I repeat myself too much because it sounds like the conversation is I'm really going in favor of the um retaining the siblings with MI part of Orion. I just wanted to echo that and call in to lend my support as the co-UTO president, working hard with Megan to um at Orion, working hard to, you know, bring our community back together after such a tumultuous um difficult years. And we are still kind of climbing out of the darkness in many ways. And um, we know firsthand what it's like to to lose families and and are still recovering from from the loss of families and feel like this is one concrete way that the district can can um put support back into a program that has been so significantly impacted. And, you know, we just, Orion, we believe community first and that family should be able to stay together. So I I don't need to um to say too much more because it sounds like the conversation is going in a very positive direction, which I appreciate. Um, and that's all I'll say. Have a good night, everyone.
Those are all the speakers, right? Okay, so I'm gonna need a motion.
Who would like?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approving the recommendation from Dr. Baker to allow these siblings and you've got the the chart in the memo. I won't go through all the numbers, but it's the nine siblings over the course of the next, I think it's six years.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? No? None? Okay. Moving on to ten point two. It's recommendation, adoption of resolution twenty two, authorizing electronic meeting of the Board of Trustees during state of emergency pursuant to government code section fifty four ninety five three E.
Yes, and this is the resul- resolution that we had been approving except for last month. And um we were coming back in person, so I saw no need. But since Omicron, what I want to be able to do, and in talking very carefully to our legal guru Claire Cunningham, which many of you know, you know, she was at one time our attorney, but now she's, you know, moved up that that great ladder where she works with all of the superintendents at certain times and we need her. She said uh in in doing so and going in this manner to bring the resolution forward again, because you never know with this variant, if, you know, God forbid, none of us get it, but you cannot attend the meeting. And you know, the Brown Act says if you cannot attend the meeting without something like this, you must put on your front door. There's a meeting going on for the River City School District, blah, blah, blah. You don't want anybody coming to your house. So this will allow you to do it virtually as board members. The rest of us, that does not pertain to us, but it does pertain to you five. So um that's why this is on the agenda and probably as long as a variant is running, we will continue to do this. And even if, you know, someone in your family, you know, um, becomes ill, you know, you would want to, you know, be able to stay, be able to stay at home and still participate in the meeting.
Right, or if you're traveling or for some reason, you know, you have to stay home and can't make it or whatever. Uh, or you're stuck in the snow, never know. You can still participate because I think it's important that we do.
And please remember, uh, Ali reminded me that the resolution was updated and she sent you an email about it. And so you've got the updated one. This is the one that Claire redid. Because, well, number one, we're doing it and now other school districts are going to be copying us.
So do I have a motion?
So mood?
Second.
Hi.
So let's start with Cecilia.
The only thing I have to report is that, again, I did meet with some of the parents from the Mandarin immersion program. And then just our one on one with John, so that's it.
Jack?
Um, let's see, Lisa and I had the workforce housing committee meeting um to prepare for the study session that we had tonight. Um, Dr. Baker and I attended the chamber education committee. Dr. Baker was at the the workforce housing too, sorry. Chamber Education Committee meeting. Um, we also had a bond team meeting. And then there was the um MTSS district leadership team meeting, I think, last week.
Mike?
Yeah, Janet covered the bond committee and the MTSS meeting. Measure T Citizens Bond Oversight Committee met in December, just after our last board meeting or the next day after. Um, and then Lisa already mentioned that SMCSBA hosted Superintendent Maggie McGee, Nancy McGee to talk about um pandemic response.
Lisa? Yeah, um, so, yeah, so a couple of, you know, county calls and CSBA calls, lots of conversations, of course, with COVID. I did want to mention that I sat in just on the welcoming for the professional development day uh that Dr. Baker and Liz basically gave the welcome. And I know you guys had a full day of professional development. So maybe um, you know, I'd love to hear about that either just briefly at the report tonight or, you know, maybe on the, you know, at some point, it'd be nice just to hear how the whole day went. Because I just, anyway, it was, it was very energizing. You did a nice job just with the welcome to bring everybody back and thank everybody. Um, and I know we have some teachers and staff on the call tonight. So I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of, all of the folks who put a lot of work into that day as well as attended that day. Um, I did attend a Safe Routes to Schools meeting today and my goodness, there is so much happening in our I did attend a Safe Routes to Schools meeting today and my goodness, there is so much happening in our, in Redwood City, both by our own district staff and the city and the county, but there's just a lot going on. I think what I'll do is I was going to send out some links because there's opportunities for those of us who would like to input into pedestrian bike. They've got an interactive map and you can go on and you can identify intersections where you can make comments if you know that it's a busy intersection. And you know, we've already talked about some of those around our school sites. So I really want to, and I think they're going to do a peach jar. And they're going to try to get more information out to school sites, but we really need to take the opportunity to make sure we get our information in around the school sites because this is going to inform the city and the county and some of the work they'll be taking on in the next few years, you know, whether it's additional stop signs or traffic lights or whatever it is. So I'll make sure I, I send that, I guess, to you and then, and also send it to Patrina, who's our wellness coordinator. So we just need to make sure we get that out to everybody. I went on today and I already commented on a few of the intersections. You can also upload photos where you might show a dangerous situation or whatever. Let's see, there's also going to be, you know, there's a pilot that Sam Trans is working on with the county. And it's going to be a six-month pilot. And this is also going to help inform a lot of public transportation for students getting to school and just moving around our county. And so I'm, I know we've already been participating somewhat with kind of a pre-pilot with Adelante Selby. If you remember, we got those sixty Clipper cards and all of that. Well, this is an opportunity for any of the free and reduced lunch students to basically get a free pass, monthly passes for six months. They can ride any transportation in the county, but they can also use it to get to schools. And we're going to be collecting data and stuff on this. And there's a meeting on Friday and, and I'm going to connect with Patricia. Am I saying her name right? Patricia tomorrow. Just to make, I don't know, she's the one going or somebody going. But there's a real opportunity and it's all paid for and all of that. So then we just basically have to get out these cards. And so I'm hoping that some of our students and our families, this will be a really useful thing for them. And then the other thing is this is going to inform Sam Trans on bus routes for you know, the new bus maps that'll be going out for the next probably five or 10 years. So it's a really important thing for us to be involved with. Brianna Evans, who is the new Equity Officer with Redwood City, she talked about the people's budget, which I think some of you may have seen this, there's a million dollars where the people in Redwood City are going to have an opportunity to help decide how to spend that money. And so they really want students to be involved. So again, I'm going to talk to Dr. Baker and give you the information. And I was thinking it might be a great thing for social studies teachers to basically, it's a real world, world thing where students could have input into how to spend this million dollars. And it can be any kind of one-time money for safety measures for, you know, outdoor ed, a field trip. I mean, it could be for anything, basically. And there's a whole process there. I think those were kind of the highlights. So anyway, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. I mean, I'm very pleased that we're getting more assistance, I think, from the city and the county right now. Okay, that's it.
So all I have is meeting with the parents for Orion and advocating for more help from the county for our students with testing and shots and those kinds of things.
So I attended on Monday night, the transfer territory meeting. That was, that took place. Very interesting. It's the first been to it. So Beth Toledo, who's the superintendent in Los Laminas and I, and I, we were there in the audience and it was interesting process. I thought it was in a go and a different direction and so did she. But there's nine criteria and you vote on those criteria, but just because you vote one way or another, doesn't mean at the end you can vote what you really believe in the manner it should go. So they voted not to transfer. So I was very pleased to see that. First, it was really confusing and Beth and I were texting each other back and forth. This doesn't sound right. And I go, I don't know, because I've never done, been involved in it. But that's where it's going to head. And so at their next meeting, there will be a resolution to not move those twenty-three parcels that are in Los Laminas and the three that are on Alameda, the Las Pulgas to move them to the Los Laminas School District. So that, that was Monday night.
Was that unanimous, do you know?
It was. It was, it was. Yeah, I was. And then last night I was at RCEF meeting and you know, Jason is, has taken a position in another field at this point in time. And so Patti Ortiz is going to be the interim, the interim for until they find somebody. She's going to be with their interim executive director until they find somebody. And she, she made that very clear last night. So, and, but it was, it was a good meeting, you know, Patti has a lot of energy and everything. So I'm sure. Yeah, she knows it. Right, 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 right. So and then a week ago, oh, no, no, yeah, it was on Thursday, we had the meeting on the Bayside with Sarah Shackle, the principal of North Star and McKinley MIT and also her assistant principal, Kelly Noriega. And we met with Bayside families who took the tests for North Star and qualify. And so it was really good to get the questions and the answers out there because I had a lot of questions. And there's a parent on there that is bilingual and talked about the program and answered their questions and did a great job. I need to give kudos to Michelle Ramon of the slide deck that she did. You know how she does all those graphics and everything? It was fantastic. So it's a very good meeting. It was a really good meeting. It went longer than we thought. And because it was Dia de los Reyes, we didn't get some people, but they wanted the recording. They wanted the recording. And then Sarah did say some of them did contact her this week after seeing the recording. Yeah, so it was, it was good. It was good.
Twelve point one, the Quarterly Williams Report. Do we have any questions or comments on that? None? Okay, correspondence? We did have a email from a parent about North Star and schools of choice. And we also got a email from God, her name escapes me. Right from the food. Any others? So fourteen point one, possible other business suggested items for future agendas. None. Says John. Okay. Fifteen point one, changes to the board agenda schedule. None this evening. Great. Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor? Hi. Thank you, everybody. It's great to see you all.